Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November fourteenth School Board meeting. The meeting is now in session. Would you all please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Career Center Air Force JROTC.
Color, I would say, cut, carry, colors, forward, march. Calligraphy. Off. Close.
To the flag, from the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this evening with a recognition, and we will hear from some of our students who attended the recent Minority Student Achievement Network Student Conference. Yorktown Councilor Caitlin Brezhnahan, who actually was my own son's counselor his last two years at Yorktown. Caitlin Brezhnahan, one of the chaperones on the trip, will introduce the students. Ms. Brezhnahan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am Caitlin Brezhnahan, and I am a counselor at Yorktown and also the staff, one of the staff liaisons to the M-SAN group at Yorktown High School. In October, just a few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to take eight high school students from Cleveland, Ohio, for M-SAN's annual student conference. Tonight, they will share their experiences with you. They put together a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm actually going to have them come up now and introduce themselves. So, guys, come on up.
Hello, all. My name is Musa Yemr from Wakefield High School.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Ross from H.B. Woodlawn.
Hello, my name is Jade Northover. I'm from Yorktown High School.
Hello, my name is Monique Vaz. I'm from Washington Lee High School.
Hello, my name is Brianna Alexander. I'm from Wakefield High School.
Hello, I'm Sasha from Yorktown High School.
Hello, I'm Elijah Waldine. I'm from Washington Lee High School.
Okay. Skip this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this was what we did at Ohio. And that, followed by that, we had group activities where we got to do icebreakers and get to know other people from other states and counties. And we also had table talk discussions during dinner, just to open up our, like, view of different stuff. We talked about, like, what, we, they brought up different questions or different things that happened back home that we can share to each other. We got to visit three colleges, Cleveland State University, Case Western, and Kent State. And after that, we got to visit the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And we also got presentations from them about how different songs had, you know, political backgrounds behind them. And at the end, we finished off doing, or figuring out our action plan. These are some of the pictures that we took during our trip.
We were not driving when we took that picture.
We had Ubers.
So, our goal is to expand the M-SAN program throughout all of the high schools at, in Arlington. And right now, the M-SAN program is only at Yorktown, and it's only for males. And we would like to expand this program so every person of color throughout all of Arlington can experience what we got to experience over these couple of days. And throughout the program, we're thinking of doing, like, peer-to-peer, like, mentoring, because we've, we've seen that students of color disproportionately don't take AP classes, and they get suspended, and they underachieve at all of the high schools.
Okay, so, to conclude, we're thinking of implementing, like Monique said, M-SAN program in all the schools, and working with our minority coordinators and staff and faculty at our schools to help us achieve this. We're, we're thinking, maybe, to, just to instill this in every, we don't have, we don't have, like, official plans yet, but we're, we're, we're going to work really hard and, and build this, build this important organization in every one of our schools.
I'm going to share my experience at the conference. At the, at the M-SAN conference in Cleveland, there were many, there were people of different ethnicities and from countries all over the nation, counties all over the nation. It was amazing being able to be around people who are like me and are experiencing the same things as me. I don't have time to talk about everything we did, but I will share a few highlights. The first day, we heard from a motivational speaker named Jeff Johnson, and he had a great speech about success and the people you keep around you. The next day, we visited colleges that we chose. I went to Case Western Reserve University and Kent State University. And I have never heard about either of the schools, but after I went, I want to apply to both. The M-SAN, the M-SAN conference was a life-changing experience. I was crying the day we left, because I felt as though I, I had met, like, my best friends and family in just three days. And I have gone to predominantly white middle school and now high school, and I've never had such an experience with the support that we had and being in the same room as people who experienced what I do and look just like me. And M-SAN was an experience that I will never forget.
Okay. Just a little memo about the trip that we went to Ohio. So, the trip to the annual Minority Student Achievement Network was filled with inspiration, joy, and a lot of personal connections to our own struggles we face as a minority at our home counties. I was truly inspired by the history behind the protests and the resiliency at the shooting and the massacre of Kent State University in 1970. The trip as a whole was beyond inspiring. It truly touched me seeing people who looked like me enjoying the time we were spending there, and the meetings we had in circles during dinner made me feel connected some kind of way. The trip to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Museum pretty much taught me that the genre, rock and roll, was basically this subtle, quiet movement to criticize the masses on their wrong views at that time. I have this to-do list in my mind, and before that, I am passionate on nurturing activism as a panel for change. So, I added to my mental to-do list that I will take it upon me and my fellow peers to create a county-wide Minority Student Achievement Network that plays in all schools across Arlington Public Schools and have many branches in school that are under the umbrella of M-SAN. And also, just something I said during the final dinner was that, I said to my group that our goal and hope should be that we come here again, talk about what we have accomplished, not come in here to talk about the gaps and things that we haven't accomplished. Thank you.
And also, we would really like to thank Arlington County for the opportunity to go on this trip. As you can tell, our students really felt empowered by this experience and are looking forward to implementing their action plan within Arlington Public High Schools. Now, do you guys have any questions for our group?
I was going to say, I am quite sure I can, I could see my colleagues up here, ready to turn their microphones on. So, I just want to say a quick thank you very much to all of you, and I'm so glad you were able to visit Ohio, which is where I grew up myself. It's really wonderful to hear how you were inspired by the stories of Kent State and rock and roll. So, let me turn it over to some of my colleagues who I know have questions for you. Mr. Lander?
Yes. One, welcome. It's so good to see you, and I noticed the gender difference, because when we, when I first came on the board, it was all males from Yorktown. So, I was thinking to myself, something's different. Something is different in a good way, so it's good to see you lovely faces, young ladies joining the crew. And of course, as, as you do when you get involved in something, you push it forward. I, I hope the trip to Ohio was, was very interesting and knowledgeable, and I forget your first name, young man, and with the ROTC. Elijah, you were talking about the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. You know Tupac is going in this year. He's a, he's the second-best rapper of all time, because of course, Biggie, Biggie's the best, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, excellent, excellent. Good deal. And you guys learned about the colleges, which is great. Wilberforce, the oldest African-American historically-black college, is in Ohio, so that's something else that you guys can take along with Kent State and the other places that you visit. One of the things that, as you talked about, as you want to push the accomplishments forward is to expand the program into other high schools. And I know you have a great support system with your counselor at Wakefield, and of course, our Minority Achievement Supervisor, Ms. Clark, back there, who will support you. Raise your hand, Ms. Clark. Yeah, there we go. There you go. Plenty of support. And Ms. Sylvia O'Neil, and, oh wait, Mr. Sample, I saw him, Mr. Bittner, there we are, Mr. Bittner in the back. I, I want to make sure, I, I thank you all for your efforts in supporting our children of color, because they are not minorities, they are just children of color, and they bring unique experiences, and we celebrate you. I, I was thinking the other day that you guys really are, you know, sort of our heroes, because you are facing a world that we have never seen before. So, like, internet bullying wasn't something I had to deal with, you know what I mean? We still had to write letters. So, it was a little, yeah, you know, check no if you like me, check yes or no, stuff like that. You guys, you guys can, can get on the internet, and the information comes so fast. So, continue to be responsible. Please, we have a girls' conference this, this Saturday, so I hope to see you guys there. Please, not just with the M-SAN group, but please continue to be examples for the students of color that come after you, because they'll be trying to figure out how to deal with all this information and all these opportunities, and, and your experience in leadership will be example to them. So, I congratulate you, and so glad to see the females involved this year, and I look forward next year to come back and hear about your experience. Where are you going next year?
Brookline, Massachusetts.
Massachusetts?
Brookline.
Brookline, yes. Excellent, good, good, good. Not too far from Boston. Excellent. All right, well, good deal. Well, it's good to see you guys, and thank you so much for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have more questions. Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. Yeah, delighted to see you all here, and glad to hear that you had a good trip. And I just have a one question, and that is about the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. It was Rock and Roll, James. It's Rock and Roll. They went to the Rock, not the Rap Hall of Fame, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. So, how did you like it? Because when I went a couple of years ago, I noticed there was kind of a predominant theme of songs and other things that kind of related more to, you know, my, when I was your age, you know, about five years ago. So, you know, did you find the references to the historical rock and roll interesting or outdated, or just kind of wondering how it related to, you know, folks of your age?
So, we didn't have that much time at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. We, we had, like, thirty minutes. So, we, we had a presentation during that, during, like, for thirty minutes, and they were talking to us about the history and how it impacted, like Elijah was saying, how it impacted just the global, global issues, like, during the seventies, the Vietnam War, and, and like, the civil rights movement. That's what we talked about in, during that, during that conference. So, after that, we had, like, thirty minutes in the, in the museum. And I think, talking to a few of the students that did get to explore a little bit more of the museum, there was a few sections that had, like, current artists that were mentioned, but majority of the museum was older rock and roll Hall of Famers and just, there were little sections, and I was kind of, I wasn't shocked, but they did mention this, where they had some, like, African-American, African-American, like, inductees, and those sections were smaller, whereas the, the, the white inductees, there were bigger sections in that, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all so much again, and I have a question. You all introduced yourselves as coming from different high schools, but said that this is a Yorktown program and that you want to expand this to all the high schools. So, could you explain the structure a little bit? And if you're at different high schools, how is it that we don't have this at all the high schools?
Can you repeat the last part, please?
Oh, just, well, the, the simple question is, it was stated that you want to expand this to all the high schools, and it only exists at Yorktown, but you all are from all the different high schools. So, could you explain?
Yes.
Absolutely, Ms. Clark. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Again, I want to thank this awesome group for being adventurous and taking on a challenge to represent our school system with school systems that are similar to ours as far as being high-performing, but still having an achievement and an opportunity gap. So, thank you. Thank you to our fabulous staff that are here that support them every day. One of the initiatives that I wanted to take on this year, knowing that the program was at Yorktown and we were working with a predominantly male group, my vision was to expand it so that many students will have the opportunity in all of our high schools to have the opportunity, the exposure, to have the leadership experiences. So, we just spread the wealth a little bit. We are limited on the amount of students that we can sponsor and send, but the difference this year is that we have our nights. They're going to come back and knight other students. That's why we chose eleventh-grade students, so they have a year to promote, a year to recruit other students to carry on the messages of what they have learned when they were in Ohio.
That's, that's great to know. Thank you. And so, we expect to see more students next year, you're saying?
Yes.
And we'll be able to fund that?
If the board gives more money, we definitely can.
See, I wasn't going to address that here at this meeting.
Well, that, that's okay.
We'll be hearing from you, okay.
We'll be hearing from you and Dr. Naturis on this, correct?
We like to know. We don't make promises on the spot, but we definitely, you know, like to know about what we can do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do want to make sure, I know Mr. Lander called out a number. Thank you all for coming, those of you who came to support the students. And we do have, as we know, Ms. Brezhnahan accompanying the students on the trip, as well as Ivan Lopez. If I could ask you to stand real quickly, along with Supervisor of Secondary Ed, Ty, there he is. Our Supervisor of Secondary Ed, Tyrone Byrd. And of course, we've met Carolyn Clark, our Supervisor for Minority Achievement. Thank you so much.
And we do, and we do have Sheri Benitez from Yorktown.
Okay. There she is, yes.
And we have a lot of other achievement coordinators that will work with our team and keep the message going and help facilitate groups. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh.
Okay, Sheri Benitez is from Yorktown. James Sample.
Yep.
Washington Lee.
Yes.
And Alan Butler, Wakefield. They are going to help facilitate the recruiting of the message and carrying this work on for the rest of the year, onto next year, as we get through our action plans.
Fantastic, thank you. And one last thing, could I ask any friends, family, supporters that came with the students to please raise their hand? We could give you applause. There they are. Thank you so much. And if you all, as well as your staff supporters, would indulge us with a photo opportunity, we would appreciate that right up here at front. Thanks.
Okay. You have an announcement, Nancy? Do any of you guys have announcements?
No.
Okay. Dr. Murphy, okay. We are now at announcements. Tomorrow and Thursday, most of the board will be attending the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg. And on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, we will have a work session on the 2019-2028 Capital Improvement Plan and the AFSP at 7:00 PM here in this building, Room 101. Board colleagues, do you have any announcements? Ms. Van Doren?
Thank you, Dr. Cannon. I had got a wonderful email last summer from a resident in Arlington, reporting that she had received a gift of a Little Free library, and thought that there were too many Little Free libraries on her street and thought it might have a better home. So, Collin Springs Elementary School offered to be the home of the Little Free library, and it, this week, went up. It, the books were waiting to go into it in the, in the office, and the facility staff, thank you very much, Mr. Chadwick, installed the Little Free library, is now full of books. And if you all don't know how they operate, you can just go up and take one. So, if you have any children's books that you think might be read at Collin Springs, you can drop them off in the front office, and they're happy to put them there, and it's amazing, because they go. So, we are very, very appreciative to Kathleen O'Brien, who donated this Little Free library to Collin Springs.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Murphy, do you have announcements?
Yes, I do. Good evening. Thank you. I want to start by letting folks know that we have just completed our annual report for the past school year, and it's kind of a compilation of student accomplishments, as well as many of the priorities the board had for last year. And so, this is about the time of year that we wrap that up. It is available, as you can see there, on our website, and we are going to be printing a limited number of those. But I think it's some very good work. It shows you, really, the relationship between the three-to-five-year action plan and this year's 2017-18-year action plan. And then it points out a number of things that are happening, really, across the school divisions. So, again, something that you should look for, and we have several of these reports that I think really capture what we've done over the last several years. So, I just want folks to be aware of that, and it's something they may want to point to in the future. Mr. Lander mentioned this earlier this evening, and I've been highlighting this, because this is something that we offer for our middle school students, both girls and boys. We've got the girls' conference coming up here on Saturday, and one of the things that we promote is leadership, and that the idea of students coming out and thinking about their future and making career plans, and how they can begin to complete middle school, but then also prepare for high school and post-secondary opportunities. So, Marymount is going to be our host this year. It kicks off at 8:00 AM. I've prompted Mr. Chadwick. We invariably have a little bit of a transportation problem, but we've prompted Mr. Chadwick to make sure that we've got all our buses there, and in many cases, they have to come from either Williamsburg or Swanson, so we're close this year, so we're, looking like we'll get kicked off right on time. We've got, we've just come through, you know, teacher prep, and report cards are beginning to come out, so be looking for those here the mid-part of November for secondary report cards, and then for elementary report cards at the end of the month. We have a discussion coming up tomorrow evening at Washington Lee, and I'll make mention of this in my action plan update a little bit later this evening. But we are encouraged, folks, to come out and be part of the community conversation as we begin to engage the community around some best practices about how we use technology devices and how then they relate to instructions. So, 7:00 PM tomorrow evening, right here next door. We have also kicked off a new process for option and transfer update. The application period opened recently here and is open till Friday, and we're getting some really good responses. The options that are available include H.B. Woodlawn, Arlington Tech, the Wakefield AP Capstone, and the WNLIB program. I do want to make note that if you can't access the online application, that you can go to your school, and you can work with our school folks there to, you know, access some of that information, or you can go and visit the SciFAX Welcome Center, and we have support there as well. For other transfers, right now, we're looking at Wakefield and Yorktown only. If students want to transfer among the three high schools, those two high schools are open. And then, we do have the boundary, middle school boundary presentation this evening. We're moving forward with some type of boundary decision later in December. But once that middle school boundary decision is made, we will reassess the middle school situation in December, and then give ample enough time for folks, if they're interested in pursuing those options, to make those choices. I want to thank all of our school psychologists, as this week is School Psychologists Awareness Week, for the work they do. And this is really throughout our county. We're celebrating some of the things that they contribute to, not only helping our educators, but also helping our students, and they really play a pretty critical role with a lot of the different activities at our schools. So, congratulations to them and their, you know, their role in supporting students socially, emotionally, as well as academically. We've also got the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Annual Literary and Visual Arts Contest. We have tremendous participation. I think the last several years, we've had 100% of all of our schools have some type of, you know, entries. This year, it's the man behind the dream, and students are going to be exploring the roots of Dr. King and his life, and then making connections to Dr. King's access some of that information. Or you can go and visit the SciFAX Welcome Center, and we have support there as well. For other transfers, right now, we're looking at Wakefield and Yorktown only. If students want to transfer among the three high schools, those two high schools are open. And then, we do have the boundary, Middle School Boundary Presentation this evening. We're moving forward with some type of boundary decision later in December. But once that Middle School Boundary Decision is made, we will reassess the middle school situation in December, and then give ample enough time for folks, if they're interested in pursuing those options, to make those choices. I want to thank all of our school psychologists, as this week is School Psychologists Awareness Week, for the work they do. And this is really throughout our county. We're celebrating some of the things that they contribute to, not only helping our educators, but also helping our students. And they really play a pretty critical role with a lot of the different activities at our schools. So, congratulations to them and their, you know, their role in supporting students socially, emotionally, as well as academically. We've also got the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Annual Literary and Visual Arts Contest. We have tremendous participation. I think the last several years, we've had 100% of all of our schools have some type of, you know, entries. This year, it's the man behind the dream. And students are going to be exploring the roots of Dr. King and his life, and then making connections to Dr. King's life, to how it's influenced their own lives. Dawn Smith in School and Community Relations is going to be marshaling this. Entries are due by December 15th, so that's just a little bit over a month away. But more information will be coming out to school principals about this, and we'll also be promoting this through our School and Community Relations Department. We've got budget season coming up here on the 16th, later this week. We've got an APS Budget Forum. It's going to be led by Leslie Peterson with our Hispanic community. We typically have a very strong turnout. We've also got a number of Budget Forum schedules here through the month of November and into December. We also have slated a joint county APS Budget Presentation with the Arlington Civic Federation, and I will be doing that in concert with Mark Schwartz, the County Manager. And then, we're slated to come forward on February 22nd with my proposed budget for FY 2019. Kind of some other important dates, and I'll kind of revisit some of these. But Middle School Boundaries, this evening, the School Board's going to receive a recommendation. We've also got the public hearings slated for the next School Board Meeting on November 30th. And I think the way that's going to be staged is that'll start at 7:00 PM, or approximately at that time. And then, the School Board is slated to adopt the proposed Middle School Boundaries adjustments on Thursday, December 14th. With the Educational Center focus, we've got that coming forward to the Board. We're going to be looking to, once the Board has taken action to move forward with some of the facility issues here, we're going to be looking to align the instructional focus through the strategic planning process. And then, the Board is also taking action this evening, tonight, on the Career Center Working Group. We've also got an online feedback that we're accepting through tomorrow for our new strategic plan. And so, that group is also in motion with some of the things that they're doing. So, today, we had a meeting, we annually meet, or we regularly meet, weekly, with our leadership team here. And we began discussing, evidently, there's some inclement weather coming our way in the way of snow flurries. So, that prompted the whole discussion about us making our community, and beginning to make our community aware of, in the event, as we go further into the winter months, that we're prepared, and that we make sure that folks are aware of how we are going to be announcing delays. So, we typically, if we have a weather event during the evening, or inclement weather, either ice or snow, we typically try and get a message out to parents and families by 5:00 AM the following morning, whether it's going to be a delay or a closing. If we're also looking at early dismissal, depending on the strength of the storm, and how fast it's tracking, we try and get a message out to parents, so to give them ample time by 11:00 AM. We constantly keep the website up to date, and that's really a good first point of access. We typically make decisions about 4:00, 4:30 AM in the morning, because it takes about 30 minutes to get into the news cycle. So, we're trying to make these decisions in time enough to let folks know. But we've got a host of other ways that we communicate, either through text or social media. And we do have a hotline, and that is both in English and Spanish. So, we'll continue to bring this back. I just want to begin to tune people into this. We also recognize that many times when there is closings, that we will have extended day, stay until parents arrive. So, we try and make accommodations, recognizing that parents may have to be traveling some distance to return home. And oftentimes, our roads around here get a little bit gridlocked as a result of when inclement weather strikes. So, beginning to have this discussion in preparing people. And I guess the last thing is, you may want to dust off whatever childcare plans, or plans in the event that we do have closings, or delays, or early outs, as part of our weather planning. Finally, Thanksgiving is right around the corner, and I just want to say to everyone, Happy Thanksgiving. We are very grateful and appreciative of the many things here that are going on. I think most significantly, our students and our staff for what they do each and every day. And so, I hope they have a great Thanksgiving, and an enjoyable extended holiday.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. We are now ready to act on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, five to zero. I would like to share that as part of our consent agenda, the Board received our virtual learning report. We get briefing reports that look like this. Just to remind my colleagues, as well as those in the audience, for, to keep our work focused and our meeting times efficient, we see a number of topics every other year as a full presentation with question and answer. And then, in the off years, we will receive a briefing report that gives us an update on the data. Virtual learning is not a particularly large program right now in Arlington Public Schools. We do have community members who occasionally think that this is how we're planning to deal with our capacity issues. It is not. In fact, this program has grown steadily and carefully, on purpose, to make sure that we're offering quality opportunities. But importantly, I think what the Board's priority here is to ensure that there's, we're offering flexibility to students, so that they can manage their schedules, take courses, perhaps giving themselves, freeing up their schedules to take courses they would prefer to take, by taking some courses this way. So, and I would, Ms. Van Doren, before our meeting meant, reminded me that we are seeing our Program of Studies later on in this meeting. So, if Board colleagues, if you have any questions or comments about virtual learning, I think that would be a time, then, that we can also talk about that. So, from there, we will move on with our agenda. It is time to hear citizen comment on non-agenda items. I will first review our speaker guidelines. Ms. Elliott, we do have speakers?
One.
Just one? Okay. Let me review the speaker guidelines. The School Board welcomes public comment. Generally, School Board members do not respond to comments during the meetings. If they've not already signed up online, speakers must submit a speaker slip to the clerk before the agenda item they wish to speak on is called. Each speaker may speak for up to two minutes. There's a timer to keep, to help you keep track of your time, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Arlington Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and address their comments to the entire School Board. Speakers are called in the order in which they sign up. If you have written comments, please give them to the clerk. We do ask the audience to refrain from applauding, we do ask the audience to refrain from applauding, as it does take time away from the remaining speakers. Ms. Elliott, would you like to call the first speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Our first and only speaker is Long Westerlin.
I feel like I'm on the clock. Okay. Board members, hi, how are you? My name is Long Westerlin. I live in Halls Hill. I wanted to speak to you tonight about the fact that you're not, well, the staff has made a decision not to move the Immersion program. We love Immersion, whether or not a second language is Python, Java, or Spanish. We think that our kids should have a second language. We have three at Key right now. My issue with it is that by leaving, so I am a coach. I coach a number of soccer, football, basketball teams. And my issue is, is that the distance, what worries me about leaving the middle school program at Gunston, is that, for instance, last night, we went to TJ Community Center for practice, and it's only three miles from the house, but it took 20 minutes. And in basketball, we're in that season now, and what happens is, the older kids have later start times. We practice until eight or nine, and it's not healthy for the kids to go home, shower, and then have to wake up at six. So, my worry is, how do we rectify that situation? And then, for me, as a coach, how do I, well, as a parent also, how do I get home, fight traffic, and then go to a recital, or a play, or anything else? So, in thinking this, I understand the passions and the arguments against moving it. But as you work through this, I ask you to consider, maybe down the road, starting up another program somewhere that is central for all of Arlington. Because I coach a lot of kids, and I hear kids dropping out, because their parents are like, it's just too far. Traffic is a burden. It is real, and it's a burden. So, please, thank you very much. I'm out.
Excellent timing. Thank you. We will now hear our two monitoring items. The first is the Superintendent's Update on the 2017-2018 Action Plan. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. I guess this evening, I wanted to bring to your attention that we have this handy guide. I know we've got those here in the office, and I also know that they are available on the website. But it does outline many of the things that I'm going to cover this evening. And I was just reminded earlier today, we had an opportunity to attend an event in the community, and there were some questions that were asked by some of the constituents. So, I thought it would just be good to remind folks of this. This kind of outlines some of the dates and the timelines related to many of the things that we provide for an update. And this evening, what I'm going to try and do is just give you an idea of what the schedule looks like, but also, what are some of the pending dates that are coming next. I'll just remind everyone, and I think it plays out with many of the projects that we're talking about here, is we're really looking, number one, what are the best learning environments and experiences that we can create for our students today, but also in the future. We recognize also that enrollment is continuing to grow, and we need to meet that need, you know, coupled with the fact that many of the projects that we have are complex, and they're overlapping, and they're very integrated and connected. What we've done, not only this evening, but done here with the guide, is we've been able to sort of categorize these into four topical areas, and they are color-coded. They relate to new policies. They relate for prep for new schools and program moves, some operational planning that is pretty standard each year, and then capital initiatives. And if you go to our Engage website, you can capture a lot of this information. It's up in the upper left-hand corner. If you pull down that menu, it'll bring you to what I call a microsite. And there, on the microsite, you'll see each one of these particular projects. It's got information about schedule. It's got a little bit of a one-pager, or more, about what the topic is about. It also gives you a calendar of activities, and it lets you know how that you may engage, or be able to provide feedback at the appropriate time. So, all of these projects exist there on the microsite. When we look at some of these particular projects under these categories or groups, under policies and policy revisions, we've already addressed the options and transfer with a follow-up in relationship to the strategic plan that is going on, and we'll be revisiting that after the strategic plan has been put to bed. I made mention, we've got the acceptable use session coming up, and we're going to be talking a little bit more about what that looks like. Inclusion is slated a little bit later in the year, looking at that particular policy. And then, we've also got the school facility naming policy that we are beginning to engage with the community. Just highlighting acceptable use with the meeting, with the community meeting coming back tomorrow evening, and then online feedback going from the 15th of November to December 1st. Staff then will be looking at some type of draft policy. And then, we'll also be coming out a little bit later, once that policy's been drafted, with some additional community engagement and some online feedback. This is slated to come to the Board shortly after the 1st of the year, and then Board action a little bit at the midpoint or beyond in January. With the school naming policy, right now, where we are with this, is that we are going to be, we're starting to conduct these focus groups in the months of November and December, and that's going to involve both students and community. We have a final report that's coming from the APS Staff Committee in early December. And then, the APS Staff Committee will be reviewing that, and then drafting a criteria to bring back to the School Board again shortly after the 1st of the year. We've got Middle School Boundaries coming this evening, as well as the Montessori move. So, those are on a timeline. We look to be addressing elementary school boundaries after, shortly after the 1st of the year, or really, the latter part of December. Just with restating kind of around the middle school transfer options, we will be revisiting those once the boundary decisions are made. So, we'll then be talking a little bit about determining what those next steps will be. I do want to clarify, though, that this does not apply to students who may be interested in applying for those options, both at HB Woodlawn, the Immersion Program at Gunston, as well as Montessori. When we are looking at the Montessori move, there is a meeting, another pivotal meeting coming up here on November 15th, and we're going to be providing recommendations to teaching and learning that identifies which Montessori grades. We'll be moving to the Patrick Henry site, and then we'll be coming back at the Board Meeting on December 14th to talk with you about the particular Montessori move. And that will be a monitoring item. That is an internal decision with staff will be making. We have operational plans. Made mention, strategic plan is ongoing. We've also highlighted some of the budget items. We have the AFSP, the Arlington Facility Student and Accommodation Plan, coming on November 28th in a work session. As part of that, that will also incorporate the Capital Improvement Framework. So, that'll be the first time that the community will be made aware of that, with the CIP coming later in the spring, after we adopt the budget. This just sort of outlines where we are with the strategic plan and the Steering Committee. We've got a meeting coming up here a little bit later this week with that. And then, we've also got meetings scheduled for November and December. As far as the different topics, they'll look at the current state in November, and then beginning to talk about mission, envision, and core values in December. And then, finally, we've got our capital initiatives. You're talking this evening about the Career Center and the Ed Center. The Reed Building has already kicked off its building-level planning committee, and that's in conjunction also with the Public Facility Review Committee. So, you can see, many of these things are very timed out. They're on, you know, a progressive schedule as we move forward. And I think we're trying to keep folks sort of abreast. Again, the best resource is to go to Engage, and kind of capture, you know, feedback, as well as updates, as far as where we are with that. And then, I'll continue to bring, you know, as I regularly do. This morning, at a meeting that I was at, we kind of filled folks in on some of the best, you know, tools to use, and best information is this Engage website, as far as keeping abreast of what's happening. So, lots of information, a little bit of a repeat from my earlier presentation, but it's always good to hear it again.
Definitely reinforcement. Ms. Elliott, do we have any speakers? No speakers? Board colleagues, questions or comments? Need time to think, or? No, not necessarily. We can certainly go on. Mr. Goldstein, okay, Ms. Toledo?
Thank you for a great presentation, and for being very detailed in timelines and dates. I really, really appreciate that. And I'll take this opportunity to say thank you to our communications team, who, I saw school talk this week, where they actually, in the first sentence, told me everything in that email, and that was wonderful. So, thank you guys for doing that. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Goldstein, you said you, oh, no, okay. I do have one question. You, in the name-changing policy, you mentioned a survey coming out. I don't know if it's helpful to pull up the slide. You referred to a survey being done November, which is this month, to students, and you included, there you go, APS at the top, APS Staff, students, families, alumni, community. Is that taking place now? And I'll just tell you why I'm asking. I did do open office hours on Monday, and had an alumni come, and he felt that alumni had not been contacted. And I just, I, obviously, we don't contact every individual, so there can often be mismatches. But is this underway?
So, let me, let me ask Lisa Stingle, because she looks prepared to be able to respond to that. So, Lisa, can you?
So, we met with them this afternoon. Actually, our students are taking the survey this week. They're doing it in their social studies classes, and it's a sample of classrooms that is taking the survey. The alumni survey, I was working with the group today, and that will be coming out probably after Thanksgiving. We're working to get those pieces together, and they'll also be putting out information on the in-person focus groups.
Terrific. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We have one more monitoring item, and that is the Summer School Report. Dr. Murphy, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. You know, I'd just like to speak to the work that happens during summer school, and it is a very broad-spectrum program, as far as what we offer our students. I think we have close to over one-third of our students participate annually. And I think the team does an excellent job in responding, and also either providing new work for credit, or the team does an excellent job in responding and also either providing new work for credit, support, or enrichment across kind of a broad spectrum. And the program has really continued to grow. I think we've brought in some new ideas. I also think you'll probably hear a little bit about some of the new activities that we're offering that I think are very, very positive. So I'm going to turn to Dr. Natress. I know she's got two members of her team here this evening. I also see other members that are here. I hope they are recognized for their work as well, as I'm sure they will be, but Dr. Natress, I will turn it to you.
All right. And I will take a bit of time to introduce the folks from our team who are here this evening. As Dr. Murphy said, summer school is a very broad team effort, not just within the Department of Teaching and Learning, but also within all of our departments. Without every department really supporting this program, it would not be nearly as successful as it is. I do want to introduce Sherri Furlot and Kathleen Bergaugh, who have done a lot of work in helping to put all of the logistics together for summer school and making sure that all of the communication within different departments is happening the way that it needs to, to get summer school rolling. And then we also have Sarah Putnam, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction here this evening, who does a lot of work with summer school as well. I'm actually going to turn the presentation over to Wendy Pilch, our Director of Elementary Education, and Ty Byrd, our Director of Secondary Education, to talk about some of the specifics regarding the work we've done this summer as well as plans for moving forward. So Ms. Pilch.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Dr. Murphy. So we had a variety of enrichment and strengthening opportunities for elementary and secondary students this summer. I want to highlight two new items. We incorporated project-based learning in the elementary strengthening this summer to give all students the opportunity to use creativity and really cultivate large projects with built-in math and literacy interventions as necessary for each individual child. Additionally, at the secondary level, there were two blended courses that were quite successful, one around personal finance and the other around economics. Staffing, we have almost 650 staff members who work during the summer months and I want to additionally thank Kathleen Bergaugh, Sherri Furlot, but also HR, Transportation and IS for all of the work. Just to give you a specific number, in 2016, there were only 115 bus routes and we had 145 this summer and Transportation did a phenomenal job providing that service for our students, so we would like to thank them. You can see all these numbers of enrollment, just to give you a synopsis, from 2015 to 2017, our enrollment has stayed pretty similar throughout the last three years. On top of the strengthening programs, there are additional summer enrichment opportunities for students at the elementary and secondary level. A few weeks ago, you saw the Young Scholars from Drew Elementary. We had 590 students from seven Title I schools participate in Innovation Academy for two weeks. There were Career Center enrichment courses, senior projects, and summer bridge work at both Wakefield and Washington &amp; Lee.
Thank you, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share some data with you with regard to our success in summer school. Summer school is a wonderful program for our students and gives students an opportunity to earn new credit and it also helps them get a chance to strengthen or make up credit that they might have lost during the school year. I attended summer school in Arlington. Wendy, did you? So there's that. So we can see here on our, on our data, for English Language Arts and Reading, unfortunately, we had a little downturn there, but that was a small sample size. It only represents 12 students, many of whom are second language learners. So Sam Klein and his team and Hill are working to help those students who are going to attempt to earn an English credit over the summer, get prepared for that challenge and then do well. So we'll continue to improve with regard to that. But you can see the rest of our numbers are very high. So students who are hoping to accelerate their learning over the summer, come to summer school and they do really well. And then for our makeup and strengthening, in English Language Arts, also again in reading, you see we had a big uptick over the last year, but unfortunately, we had a drop in mathematics and science and social studies remained steady. Our Y's Financial Literacy Certification pass rate is very high. We continue to enroll more students, as you can see, from 52 to 195 between 15 and 17 and the pass rate continues to grow. This is one of our blended courses, so we're excited about how that's working out well for our students. So it's a new approach to instruction and it seems to be working very well. Moving on to our goals for upcoming summer schools, so increasing options for our students with regard to continuing the expansion of APS development, of blended learning courses that we own ourselves, that we create and we have the opportunity to tweak those courses and so that they meet our idiosyncratic needs. And then continue refinement of successful elementary and middle school programs. We have a great program, but that's not by accident. So we're going to continue to learn about what we're doing in summer school so that we can improve on our success as we move along. And then integrate middle school offerings with the Career Center, enrichment through summer school catalog to provide more communication of options to our students. We need to make sure that our students know the options that are available to them. I believe the board has asked us that in previous years. We want to continue to make sure that we are pushing out all the wonderful opportunities that are available to our students throughout the county. And then expand new work for credit offerings at the high school level. Last year, we made a foray, foray into science. Some of the lab sciences are difficult to do in summer, but not impossible. So we want to offer some new work for credit in science and then visit with some other areas of study that might also benefit from summer school. Okay, I'll turn it over to Wendy.
And the second goal, to increase student success in makeup and strengthening courses. And two ways we're going to do that is additional training on project-based learning for our teachers. We want kids to be excited to come to summer school. I know that might not sound possible, but we did have kids running in the doors this year because the PBL was the highlight of their day. So we want to deepen the learning for teachers around that to make that experience even more important for the kiddos. And we are also going to look at data with teachers so that we can pinpoint and target the areas of need because we know we don't have a lot of time in the summer to get additional reading and math interventions for these students. So we want to work with our teachers so that they can really hone in on the areas of need for students. And we will turn it over for some questions.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Summer school is one of our favorite subjects around here. Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers? No speakers? Okay. Board questions?
Can I just provide a little bit of a backdrop and maybe Dr. Natress, you can elaborate on this. This evening, we're giving you an update on the summer school report. We're also going to be bringing summer school fees, I think, at our next meeting, then for that to be an action item later in December. So we're already beginning to kind of ramp up and prepare. So you may want to kind of factor that into some of your questions in relationship to this evening's report.
So you don't want to discuss dollars, but subjects, numbers, yes, and questions? All right. Okay. Who would like to start? I'm pretty sure there are going to be some. Ms. Van Doren?
Good evening, Dr. Natress, and I'm happy to have anybody answer the questions. I know you're often up there and I'm happy to see some happy other faces who would love to talk with us about their experiences as students in Arlington public schools. Okay, so my questions are about fees and you can, you can save those when you come back, but I'm going to date myself now and say that one of the things I noticed is that we'd be offering driver ed in the summer or during the school year. And I just wanted, you don't, you can answer it now, we can come back on it, but with driver ed in the summer, are we, are we doing that? Are we not doing it? And if so, are we charging for that? And you can come back if you want to ask that question later. The other question I have is about reading. I know that I heard lots of good feedback on the reading program this summer and I would love to see that ramped up. Are there plans to ramp that up? Because my, I think what people have always wanted is to see a continuum from this school year, continuing through the summer, so kids go in at an even higher level than they left. So is that a plan?
Two things. We will bring the driver's ed piece back when we talk about fees on, I believe that's November 30th is the information item, so we'll talk about that on November 30th as we're finalizing the various fees for each of the programs. In terms of the elementary program, Ms. Pilch spoke to that a little bit and it's one of our goals, that continuing the refinement of successful elementary and middle school programs as well as this process for utilizing data. One of the things that we tried very hard to do this summer with our strengthening program for elementary schools in particular, was to look at the student needs. So if a student is receiving additional support in phonics and during the school year and the intervention they're receiving is Orton-Gillingham or they are working with comprehension and they're receiving a level literacy intervention, that that continues right into summer school. So we were able to this year, get all of the data from the schools, share that with the summer school program. Teachers placed the students in small groups based on the needs for reading or math as well as the PBL piece and then students rotated between project-based learning, reading intervention and math intervention based on what they needed. Our plan is to expand that to include also our special education students within that because that program has sometimes been separate. Our goal is to really include that and have an inclusive summer school program also for our English learners and then we'll be looking at how we do some of that work in middle school as well for the upcoming summer.
My, my, I would love to see us allow any student that wants to take a reading program or a math program, strengthening program, be able to do that in any of our schools in the summer. That would be my goal and I, it seems to me, these programs have been ratcheted down a little bit and I'd love to see them expanded and look at whatever costs are associated with that because I think it's a great thing to be able to do and I think it sounds to me like you're really going in the right direction. And my last question, it really has to do with costs and fees and charging and as I read the virtually, virtual
Briefing report?
Virtual learning report and then the summer school report and then the program of studies, I got very confused because I couldn't tell what I had to pay for and what I didn't have to pay for. And I'd like to explore that a little bit. So for summer school, if I'm taking the economics and personal finance class in summer, which is a required class, I have to pay for that? You can, you don't have to answer it. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how as a parent this makes sense or how it doesn't get confusing because there are some things you pay for and some things you don't. And in the summer, if it's a required class that you would get credit for in order to graduate, required, like economics and personal finance, you have to actually pay for it in the summer?
So the way summer school is divided, and any of you are welcome to jump in with this, is we have enrichment programs or new work, right, where students are enhancing their learning. Those, when we bring the fees forward, you will see typically have a higher fee associated with them. Our courses where we're doing makeup and strengthening, where students may need additional support in something, they're only paying the registration fee. And so you'll see that when we bring the fees back, how those are distinguished within our system.
Okay, and I'm, I know I'm adding cost to the system, but I would love to see us maximize the use of our buildings in the summer and if students want to take classes and coursework in the summer that is required and they get credit for, I would love to see us not having fees related to that, at least not fees that would be prohibitive and sometimes our summer school fees are, so we can save that for when we come back. But I'm just noting that because then we're using our schools all year round and I would, I would just love to see us doing that because I know a lot of students increasingly want to take advantage of that summer opportunity.
Yep. So we'll bring it back to you, broken up that one, so you can see it.
Mr. Lander?
Good evening. I had a question about, since you're already at the microphone, Dr. Natress, one about the strategy as it relates to, I saw the goals and one of the things I was inquiring about was, we talked about on goal two, strengthening courses. Does that include, when we talk about enriching, enriching courses, are we talking about courses that may be for students who are labeled as gifted and talented? Are those, are there options for them during the summer to take courses that they can get credit for?
Yes, there are.
And so is that at the middle school level? It's at the high school level? What level is it at?
It's at all levels, so K-12.
So K-12, so parents who have students labeled gifted and talented do have options and I guess that will have fees associated with it for registration also. So I guess that will be a part of the answer that Ms. Van Doren, question incorporated in the question that Ms. Van Doren asked. The other piece I wanted to ask about is at the secondary level. And I don't know if you, Mr. Byrd, is the right person, but I wanted to talk about the bridge program. I know that we have a summer bridge program and they have proven to be successful, especially going from one grade level to the other. And so as Ms. Van Doren referenced, this is a cost associated with the school system. I don't know if Dr. Kristy Murphy has a feedback on what the staffing issues involved with this is, but with regard to these bridge programs, is there an opportunity for us to strategize on how these programs can be better incorporated so that it's maybe an extension of the school year? Because this is to provide a foundation for success as these students transition from elementary school to middle school and middle school to high school. And since they have such a good track record, what is it that we can do as a board, as a school system, to sort of make it more sort of foundational as a part, or not foundational, more institutionalized as far as the students' transition, so more students partake in it? Does that make sense? Because I know it's primarily for the transitioning grade, but
Yeah, we, we'll look at it.
When we come back and speak about the fees, it will be something that we need to visit there because it gets to a point where we've, we've reached our maximum capacity to enroll students. So 200 students involved is a lot. If we could determine what a number would be, I'm not sure that we'd like to put a cap on it. So if we were to reach out to schools and say, well, we're opening this for more students, the next question will be, well, how many can we bring from each of the schools?
Right. And, and, and I appreciate that and this, my, my question, my line of question really has to do with my thought of as our school system grows and increases and potentially our high schools get bigger, this transition, this bridge period is going to be even more important
Certainly.
To set up our students for success coming from middle school. And so cost is always going to be the impact because we haven't even discussed transportation, which I know is, is, is fundamental cost on how we do this. So instructionally, are the bridge programs, is there an opportunity to strengthen them instructionally, aside from the, all the other stuff that we have to do with them? Are we giving the students, in addition to the courses that they need to prepare them for this transition, is there anything else we can do as part of our bridge programs to prepare them for, like I'm thinking about, as you, as you transition from middle school to high school, you have more electives. So is there PE, something that maybe they can get credit for as part of the bridge program so that they have an opportunity to take another elective or something?
I can't speak to the, our investigation into new offerings in it. I will not argue with you philosophically. We all believe that the bridge programs help our students become better, students at the next level of study, determining what price we are able to put on that and the number of students we can incorporate. But we're continually looking for ways to improve the services that we offer the students who do enroll, but I don't know of the new
Yeah. And I only bring it up because certain costs we're going to incur anyway. So how do we get the biggest return on investments? What I'm trying to figure out because
I think it's continual development of the people who work with the students, that we continue to professional, provide professional learning for those educators so that they can enhance the learning experiences of the students who are able to enroll.
Right. And since it's one of our most successful programs, I'm trying to figure out how do we continue to build off of it? Because then maybe even if it costs us more, more students to take advantage of it, but if they're getting credit for, say, PE, then parents have an opportunity to offer, you know, art class or music class
Certainly.
Or something else to get their students involved. So that's what my thought pattern was. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Ms. Toledo?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, I don't exactly understand bridge classes. I thought that they were for students who were going to transition into an AP or advanced level class. Do we have bridge classes for other things as well? I just, when my students, when my, my students, when my kids attended summer school, I don't believe, bridge school, I don't believe bridge classes were offered at Washington Lee, so if I could learn a little bit more about that, so that I understand.
Hi, I think we do need to come back to you with a little bit more information on transition programs versus the AP Bridge, which is
Perfect, yes.
Advanced Placement Bridge and WNL Intro to Advanced Classes. They're a little bit different from each other, and some kids, for instance, for the AP Bridge program can attend more than one year
Okay.
because they are going, getting a preview of the AP class they'll be taking in the upcoming year. So we can come back with more detail about the difference between the two.
That, that would be great. And so I did want to then ask about, to confirm that blended learning programs are programs that are online and classroom instruction, correct?
Yes, so one of the things that we added this year was the Blended Economics and Personal Finance course, because we've been looking at the various ways that we provide learning experiences for students. And so this year, that particular course, the students met Monday, Wednesday, Friday with the teacher, and then Tuesdays and Thursdays, they were either learning online or they, we had open labs at the school so that students could come in who needed additional support, and it worked really nicely for a lot of our students, and I think it's a great model for prepping them for college, right? When we're in college, we go to class Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and then we're responsible for some of that learning, and that was the one assessment that Mr. Byrd discussed with the Wise Financial Literacy Certification, comes at the end of Econ and Personal Finance, and you can see that our pass rate this summer, with 195 students tested with the blended model, worked really nicely. So one of the goals that we have this summer is to actually look at other courses that we may employ blended models into that would work equally as well.
Okay, and then I do have one last question.
Sure.
I noticed that on the SOL comparison pass rate charts, can you clarify, I know that there's students who go and take summer, summer school courses because they did not pass an SOL, so is that what these charts represent, those students? Are we offering new coursework and then providing an SOL, it was a little bit?
These are, this is the makeup and strengthening one, so we have two
Okay.
course offerings that we do. One is new work for credit. So I want to take Algebra I, I've never taken it, and this is my opportunity to get that credit, as Ms. Van Doren was referencing earlier. If students want to come in and kind of get a step up, so to speak, on a course, they can do a new work for credit. So that's what these particular courses are
Okay.
that you see in that first slide. Then the second slide, these are makeup and strengthening courses. So these are students who maybe have taken English 11 and they need additional support, so they come, they enroll in the summer school course, and then they take the SOL at the end of the summer school course.
Great, and so if they take new work for credit, they can take the SOL if it, if there's one that corresponds to that
Correct.
particular class as well?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. Could you go to slide five, please? Thank you. Now, were these additional summer programs from this past summer or that we're planning for the future?
No, these are programs that we did this past summer.
Okay, all right, good, it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me. And then, can you go to slide eight? And I think I'm maybe picking up on something Tanya just asked, but, so the asterisk at the bottom says this is both new work students and makeup and strengthening students. So
Correct.
this is both students who have taken the course for the first time and students who have taken it for the second time, or
Correct.
perhaps
Yes.
more than the second time. And, and I speak from experience there. All my years in summer school finally come up, what are you laughing about? I'm serious, I have more summer school experience than anybody in this room put together. Okay, can you go back one to slide eight? I'm sorry, seven?
Yep.
Yeah, so do we have a metric or an understanding of the students here who are taking it as makeup and strengthening, and how they did in summer school compared to how they did the first time they took it?
We could pull that, we have not, we actually have the student information, we haven't necessarily analyzed it from that lens for this particular monitoring report, but one of the things that we are doing is looking at those students who did not meet proficiency and then have been following up with various offices for those individual students with the schools to see where they are to make sure that they're on track. So we could look at where they were when they took it in the spring and then they were in the summer, but we haven't actually looked at scale score comparisons or anything like that, but we could
I, I would think that would be a, a useful evaluation tool.
You sure may. Maybe he's going to tell me we've done something I don't know about.
Okay.
Part of the, part of the summer school process at the beginning of summer school is to diagnose where they are at the beginning of summer school, and differentiate their learning during the summer to speak to their needs. So the personalized learning takes place during the summer. So if you are taking an algebra class that you didn't pass during the school year, we're going to give you a diagnostic exam at the beginning of summer school to find out where your strengths and weaknesses are, and then tailor your instruction to those so that you do better than you did the previous attempt.
But again, you want to look at the, the exam results at the end versus the exam results from the end of the, the school year, I mean
They will be revisited. For those students who did not pass, they will be revisited, and then they will, we will share that information with their home school so that if they do and re-enroll in the class again, they will have a better opportunity to, to pass on a subsequent assessment.
The students who didn't pass in summer school, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, so the second time around?
Yes, in theory.
Yeah, no, I'm just kind of interested in this as an evaluation metric of the course itself. I mean, if, you know, the student gets a, you know, 70 or something, 50.
Something below 400.
Something below 400, thank you. On the
SOL.
And the SOL at the end of the school year as a course grade, and then the same score in summer school, I mean, it
Sure.
says something about, you know
And some of these students are in a predicament where they may have passed the class but failed the SOL, which opens up a whole other can
Right.
of worms for us to consider, or vice versa.
I can speak to that one from personal experience also.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. Can you go to slide 11, please? So, actually, yeah, go back one, sorry, to 10?
It's okay.
Yeah, I was confused, in the first bullet, I was confused about the blended word. What do you mean by blended?
So, and we talk about this a little bit in the Virtual Learning Briefing Report, where we talk about there are some courses that are completely online, where students are interfacing with a teacher virtually, and it could be asynchronous or synchronous. Then we have blended courses, where some of those courses are face-to-face for part of the time and then online for the other part. And that was the model that I talked about, where students come in and it's face-to-face on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Thursday, they're interacting with the content online. And so it's a blend of online learning and traditional face-to-face. That's why we call it blended.
So it's the, it's the delivery model?
Correct.
Okay, not the content that's blended?
Correct, yes, you've got it.
Okay, I, I didn't get that. And can you go to the next slide, please? And that first bullet kind of made me wonder. Recruit teachers with a history of success. Don't, they all have a history of success?
Sure, and I think part of this is really looking at what Mr. Byrd was talking about earlier, so if we know that there are students who need additional support in particular standards around something, or who are used to, I mean, all of our teachers have a history of success, I think one of the things we need to think about are where are their strengths? So if I'm a student who needs support with phonics in particular, I want you paired up with a teacher who's really strong with phonics instruction. Or if you're a student who needs support with understanding fractions, I want you paired up with a teacher whose strengths is fractions, right? All of us have strengths, and all of us have things that we want to improve upon, and so this really speaks to, if that's my expertise, I want the person with that expertise paired with a child who has that specific individual need. So that's one piece of it. The other piece is, it is really different to take a semester or a year-long course and teach it in five or six weeks, right? And so we also want teachers who are able to take that semester or year-long course and teach it really, really effectively in five or six weeks' time. And so that's the other piece that we're looking for. You know, some people do a better job of having students for a three-hour block and can sustain that, and others prefer to have shorter chunks. So it's really matching strengths with student need when we talk about that particular bullet.
Okay, so how do we do that? Because in previous conversations I've had with Ms. Furlough, we have to start hiring those summer school teachers very early, way before, way, way before summer school starts. And so how do we identify the students that A, have the need, and B, will be going to summer school so that we know we need, you know, five of these teachers and with the strong phonics background or whatever?
Yeah, so the way we did it this summer was we put out the hiring for teachers the same way we usually do January, February, March, we're hiring all of the staff throughout that. Then we got the student data, and we went to the staff with the instructional model and with the student needs, and we actually worked with the teachers to say, where do you feel you best fit with this? Is it to teach the project-based learning block? Is it the reading block? And so if we've had teachers who were trained in Orton-Gillingham, then they were working with the students who needed phonics. So we did a pairing after, we knew who the teachers were going to be, then we knew what the student needs were, and then we said, great, all right, so these 30 kids are going to work with this teacher throughout the course of the day as they cycle through, these 50 kids are going to work with these five teachers as they cycle through. So we matched them as we looked at the data later on in the spring.
How did you know what the demand signal was?
We did our best guess, and we did some additional recruiting in May and June, once we had some of the specifics for our kids.
And when's the deadline for, or the suggested enrollment period for summer school?
It depends on the grade level in the courses. Most are either the beginning of May, or we do some of the makeup and strengthening high school courses in June.
You know what I might suggest, and having been involved in summer school in a number of different school divisions, it's pretty consistent across those experiences. I think there might be some value if board members are interested in visiting the summer school sites, because I think what Dr. Natrus is pointing out is there is a very distinct uniqueness to the staff, both administratively and in the classroom, with what they do and how they do it, and it is also something that they do year in and year out, and they really enjoy because they're able to help students. So we have a good cadre of folks that are pretty consistent over that time period, and they usually, what my experience too with summer school is, usually those people come back year after year, and you really rely on them to be there and present. So why don't we think about that, you know, later this spring, setting up some time, and then you folks can visit in the meantime. Many of those folks are here, so we don't have to wait for summer school, but you can kind of get, get an insight, and, and it is, it is refreshing because it's a little bit of a different, you know, scenario that plays out as opposed to a year-long, and it's also, you know, they have a strong belief system that these students will achieve and that they will make a difference, and I think that's, that's pretty powerful in itself.
Thank you. I'm sure you won't be surprised to learn that you're not the first educator to suggest they go to summer school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As, as I mentioned, this is a topic the school board is enthusiastic about. We're big fans of summer school, and there's quite a bit of experience on this board with, with summer school for different, different reasons. So I first just want to commend you. We've, we have talked about summer school in the past, and, and there's been a lot of progress on the kinds of things we had been looking for, especially, I remember last time you all came before, as we were hammering on the issue of the Career Center being included in the summer school catalog, and I think it is now, or at least it looks like you also have plans to expand that at the middle school level, which is really great. Let me just say, I have questions, so I don't want to take too much time, I just wanted to mention several of these. So I think, I think we're all really happy to see more involvement. The Career Center is, has got great opportunities year-round, but in the summer as well. And new work in the area of science, I think that's really terrific. Mr. Lander was asking about some of our gifted students, and there are students, believe it or not, who are frustrated that they can't take all the AP science classes because they simply can't take enough science to get there. We have AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics, and so I would not be surprised if we're going to see some kids loading up in the summer so they can take even more of that. Watch for that to happen, but it's, it's great, more opportunities, we're, we're happy about that. Blended classes, it sounds like also gives kids the opportunity to have maybe a job or do other things, not just go to summer school, which is really great. And of course, the project-based learning, which, which we've, we're big fans of as well, it's really great to see that, heard some great things about how that went this summer. The only additional thing I might add that would be great to add to that portfolio are some dual enrollment courses. I'm not sure if we have any in there right now, and again, for students who want to, you know, have additional opportunities, that might be kind of neat to see. So then I, I do have just a couple of questions. Would you like to comment on any of that?
Kathleen just let me know that we did offer a dual enrollment class this past summer, and it didn't make up. So maybe as we continue to build that, we'll get more interest.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I, I think you've, you've said that in the past too, and we've had some of those classes at the Career Center. I, I think the demand would be out there if, if this, the word got out a little bit more, but let's, let's see how we can do with that. I do have a couple of things I want to ask. One is on the enrollment numbers, which was one of your earlier slides. So here it is, and, and you've divided it into different categories. The numbers, I, I see, I think at the time you said that the numbers are fairly steady, but they've actually gone down, and our student, overall student population, of course, is going up, so percentage-wise, they have gone down. And of those, I think you've got the different categories, so enrichment has gone up. Is, is it that maybe fewer kids need some of those makeup and strengthening? What's driving this? And I think, I, I'd personally like to see the numbers go the other way because we have great opportunities in the summer, and we really want more kids to want to take advantage of them, not requiring them to, but want them to. So if you have any thoughts about why that
We've had some conversation about just the fact that there has been kind of a gradual decline for all students when you look, and we haven't really figured out a why. I'm looking to see if anyone, Wendy may have some thoughts on that, but it, it is a reduction, but it's not a significant number, so go ahead.
I was just going to say that when we, when we looked into the data for the kids who are registered for the strengthening at the elementary level, over 60% of the kids did not actually need a reading or math intervention. So that was telling me that perhaps we didn't have enough enrichment opportunities for some of our students, so they were registering for the strengthening, even though that wasn't necessarily a need.
Yeah, and I will say, my understanding of how that project-based learning summer school went was that all kids worked, came together for those components, and those who needed strengthening then had those classes. It sounded like a terrific model, so
Right, and there were some students that because they were above grade level in math and reading, did a longer block of project-based learning. But when we really dug into the data, we did, it helped us notice maybe where we are not filling in enough courses in that enrichment field for, for the need.
So you're aware of that and working on it?
We are.
Ms. Talento had, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Comment on that. I know that I've mentioned this in meetings, community meetings before, but our working-class families and our low-income families, they struggle with the fees, and our enrichment fees are more expensive than our makeup and strengthening fees. And makeup and strengthening summer school education is significantly less expensive than any summer camper enrichment program that you get, can gain outside of the school. And I have yet to meet a working-class parent or a low-income family who does not want their student being enriched some way during the summer, so that they can in any way afford the registration fee for summer school. That, that's, I know I did that as a, as a, when I was a working parent with my students, I was in that place where I could afford summer school fees, but I couldn't afford enrichment, you know, and balancing the childcare that I had, and I wanted my students, my kids, to gain something over the summer. So it's something that we should explore when we look at fees, if we can manage enrichment fees, because there are a lot of students who could gain from enrichment. I know you'll be coming back with fees, but I just wanted to, again, bring that dialogue. I don't know if there's a solution, but something that we can explore.
So let's just clarify that piece for a minute, I do have another question I'll get to, but when are you coming back with the fees?
We bring them for information on November 30th, so the next
Next meeting, and then we will approve those fees as part of the budget, or
The December
December 14?
Because we have to have them in the catalog
Okay.
and we want that out with
And, and, and I think you're aware that we're really going to want to see
Yes.
the details.
Yes.
So, and we might as well do that upfront instead of asking afterwards, so
Absolutely.
Okay, and Ms. Van Doren had a comment?
Okay, so fees. I feel like I've been around a long time. The fees went up, the participation went down. Fees went up, participation went down. Our enrichment programs
participation went down. Fees went up, participation went down. Our enrichment programs have become more and more expensive, and that's just a fact. So, I would like us to look at that because if we want to encourage students to take pro courses in the summer, the more students who sign up and the more courses we offer, hopefully, the less expensive it can be to offer those, I'm hoping. And I know that I'm probably giving heart palpitations to people, but I think, given the demand for what we're doing in our school system, the more students can take courses in the summer, the better off we're going to be. So, I think our mindset, where I saw it on three years on the board, was we're going to have to charge the cost of the class to make sure that we cover, we, summer school is self-sustaining. And that was fine when it was simply a class that was nice to take. Now, I think we have more than one incentive to want students to be taking that, both for makeup work, for perhaps new credit for enrichment. And I would suggest we rethink those fees. So, I'm going to be asking a lot of questions about that. And I'm also, it's an equity issue for me. There are people who can afford to do summer school, and there are people who can't. So, we are creating a barrier to, we're saying, if you have money, you can take a new credit class, but if you don't, you can't. And we have the magic question. Magic questions in APS still exist. When I was the PTA president at Jefferson, I knew where to send families to get support for summer school if they needed scholarship assistance, but that's not written down anywhere in a course catalog. It's just simply by word of mouth. And yet again, unless you know to ask that magic question, your kids are sitting at home while you go to work, not taking those classes when if you'd known to be able to ask, can I get scholarship money, you could have done it. So, that, across the board, is an equity issue for me. And I think we, at a minimum, need to have scholarships available for anybody, and it should be in that course catalog, how to access it, how to access it because it's a mystery to families. So, if you're telling me it is, then somehow we have to get that information out more clearly. But I also think that if only those families who can afford it can avail themselves of the new credit and the enrichment classes, I think we're doing, I think we can do better. And I know we will.
We'll bring you the numbers, and then we'll look at them together and make some decisions.
So, to summarize, details, what different, all the different types of classes and the fees, data, and analysis. So, at this point, we do have the history of what the fees were and how many students were signing up over the course of the last several years. So, we should be able to see. How does that, yeah. And then I do have one more question about the makeup and strengthening SOL pass rates. I think it was slide seven, maybe? So, this is just going to be the basic labels on our graphs. We need to see the numbers of students in these different, in these categories. So, I think it was mentioned that, for example, in reading, it was a small number. So, we need to know that, you know, the pass rates. I am concerned, because I, I know I had heard this, we were really excited about this new approach. We were going to be able to target our students better with what they needed in order to, you know, be up to speed and pass the SOLs. And yet, this is, you know, yellow are last, are the summer's pass rates, and it doesn't appear to have worked. We don't, other than in, in reading, we did not do better this summer than in the past. There may be background reasons for that, maybe more kids passed in, or I don't know which way it would go, but different populations somehow. But I don't know if you have an explanation?
We have, so the end size for each of these, we have, and I'm sorry they're not on the slide, but it's 23 for reading for this one. It was 12 for new work, 159 for math, 80 for science, and 86 for social studies. We looked at this as well because it is this past year. Like, if you look at science, 2016 and 17 are pretty similar. Same for social studies, 2016 and 17 are fairly similar. Where we see the pretty precipitous drop is from 15 to 16. And so, the question we asked was, like last year, when you see one year of data, you go, oh, that's interesting for this year. Now, we have two years of data that show that. And so, we actually went back and looked at what has changed from 2015 to 2016. In 2015, we did high school summer programs for six weeks. 2016 was the year we dropped it to five weeks. And so, we even went back, and I said, so who are the teachers? Did teachers change? We have more new teachers, different teachers? How does that look? Most of our teachers have been the same teachers those three years for those courses. And so, if we get into what's the one variable that's really changed, it is the move from six weeks to five weeks. And when you think about the fact that students are taking the assessment during that five-week window, first day, we're all getting to know each other, we're starting content, but it's still, right? Then, the last couple of days we're testing, we're really talking about four to four and a half weeks of instruction. And so, what we've talked about as a team is the, do we, for some of these courses, for some of the students, need to go back to having six weeks because they are more successful? If that's the one variable that's really changed. Or can we also, or maybe it's an and, I don't know, we'll have to explore that when we look a little further. But could we also use some of the blended work we're doing and front-load some of the content? Because these are students who have had that course. As soon as school is out, we get them into the Canvas module, and here's the content. Explore that. Work with your teacher and interface online. And then, as soon as, you know, we have a orientation or something. So, what we've noted is the big shift is that time because we've lost a significant number of days for students to really process content. And all of us know, when you take something in that truncated amount of time, it can be much more difficult to master.
And to be clear, actually, I'm pretty sure the time, it was reduced from six to five hours, we extended. So, the, the quote time is actually the same, but it's the number of days of absorbing and learning.
So, if you're taking it for three hours versus four, right? We all hit that level of like, okay, I've learned everything I can learn today.
So, you're, you're talking about that and maybe bringing us, I'm sure students all over Arlington are thrilled to hear that summer school will go back to six weeks rather than five, possibly.
And it may be for some courses, right? I mean, part of what we're trying to do is think about delivery models based on need as opposed to same delivery model for everything. So, it may be a little bit different for this than it is for new work, or it may be a little bit different. And that's what we're really working on. But we've noted the same thing, and that is the one key shift.
Okay, great. So, we're looking forward to hearing back on that. And we're really looking forward to our discussion of fees.
Yes.
And I, you know, thank you all in the audience so much for indulging us. I know some of you are here for the next topic, but Mr. Lander, you just had one final comment.
Yeah, I just had one more point. And my question, I guess, is for Dr. Murphy and Dr. Natress. With regard to Arlington Community High School, that is primarily a program for our adult students. And so, my question is, is there an opportunity to provide classes over the summer to accelerate their pursuit of a high school diploma so that they are on a calendar that reflects their goals as opposed to the rest of the school system? And I realize it has budget implications, so I'm not sure we incorporated that as part of our strategy now, but I think it's something worthwhile, especially as the school system continues to grow.
They have a summer school, we provide summer school for Arlington community, and their schedule is a little bit different than the other ones. I can get that.
When we say summer school, is it a complete roster of programs? I'm, I'm envisioning that the, that the students go year-long and that we sort of accelerate their opportunity to get their high school diploma. I know previously, our strategy was to not get DEEDs, but to get high school diplomas, which is why we have the program. And I, and I support that. But as valuable as that program is, the goal of those adult students is different than our under 17 or under 18 crowd. So, how do we get them to their high school diploma as quickly as possible? And if so, if we can expand the school year for them, it would get them to that degree. So, you know, if it's a four-year program, then we get it down to three. But I think that should be our goal. And how do we utilize the summer more effectively is something I think, again, has budget implications. But I think as an overall strategy, as we talk about use of our facilities and all that other stuff, that this is something that we probably should pursue going forward because it benefits them and it benefits the school system, I think.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you again on this, as we go forward. We are ready now to move on to our action items. We have two action items tonight. The first is the Education Center Instructional Focus. Dr. Murphy, is there any additional information on this item?
No, I believe there is not.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Yes, I am so excited, Madam Chair, to provide a motion.
Yes, alright.
Colleagues, I have a motion on the Education Center Instructional Focus. On June 29th, 2017, the school board approved a motion requiring the superintendent to make recommendations on options for high school seats at the Education Center no later than December 2017. The school board also moved that the building-level planning committee and the public facilities review committee process for the Education Center project would not commence before the school board had received and acted upon the superintendent's recommendations. In consideration of staff planning and community engagement that has taken place this fall and the superintendent's recommendations regarding the school board's June 29th, 2017 motion on options for high school seats, I move that the school board direct the superintendent to proceed as follows. Program and instructional focus. Postpone selection of a program and instructional focus for the new seats to be created by adaptive use of the Education Center to no later than June 2019 after completion of the strategic plan so that they may be consistent with the strategic plan. Building upon, two, building upon previous community engagement and consistent with the completed strategic plan, provide further opportunity for community input prior to the superintendent's final recommendation for the program and instructional focus of the new high school seats. Three, provide the following detailed information on the instructional programs being considered. Data on current and anticipated student demand for the programs, the number of students to be served, staffing and facility considerations, operating and startup costs, timing, how the programs would be coordinated with other secondary program options across the county, including those being developed by, or for the Career Center site, and how the program would align with the completed strategic plan. And number four, recommending, recommend boundary changes as necessary. Adaptive reuse of the Education Center for high school seats. Number one, develop adaptable educational specifications program of spaces at the Education Center so that the building may be used for a variety of different high school programs with minimal reconfiguration and cost. Two, proceed with planning, design, and construction prior to selection of the instructional program so that the new seats are completed as soon as possible and no later than September 2022. Building Level Planning Committee, BLPC. Number one, recommend stakeholder groups to be represented on and a charge for the BLPC by December 2017. Two, commence the BLPC process by September 2018. The BLPC charge. Number one, the estimated maximum total project cost should not exceed the $25 million funding available as approved by the school board. Number two, the project shall have a capacity of 500 to 600 students. Number three, low, medium, and high-cost alternatives, all within the $25 million maximum, shall be developed and presented to the school board for consideration. Number four, options for common space, including physical education, assembly, cafeteria, and library spaces, which might also be shared with the community, shall be developed. And number five, requirements for parking and field, field space shall be developed.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to the motion? Terrific. Ms. Elliott, do we have any speakers? No speakers. Okay. Any comments before we vote, board colleagues?
Just a quick comment.
Ms. Tolento, yes?
I just, because this is such a, based so much on time, I just want to reiterate that it's spring 2018, and I think, Ms. Van Doren, you accidentally said September, and when I'm reading, I do the same. But I just want to point out, the BLPC process will start by spring 2018 so that when we vote and anyone is...
Oh, that's already right.
Yeah. Well, that's okay. It's just, sometimes people don't read the motion. They just hear the school board meeting, and because this, we're moving at such a fast pace, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone. Okay.
And you said, I think, did you all say 2017, 2018?
2018.
Do we need to, spring 2018? Okay. Comments about summer school fees before we vote? No, joking, joking. Yes, one more comment. Ms. Van Doren?
I just wanted to comment. I wanted to thank staff again. They did so much work this fall on this, engaging with the community, talking with people, going through a process. And I just really want to thank them again for that, and also for making the course correction that they made to make sure this aligns with the overall strategic plan. And I wanted to say thank you again to, I know Mr. Byrd shepherded that process through. So, thank you very much for doing that. It's, I'm very excited about this project. I think it's a great use of an existing space to house students as, as we continue to grow as a school system. So, I'm, I'm very excited about this.
Okay, terrific. Yes, and, and I would agree. Thank you so much to staff for sticking with this and getting this organized for us. School board colleagues for coming together on understanding how to think about what we had done and what we really need to do now, and, you know, how to put in place the right sequence of actions at the right times with as much information as we can get. So, with that, why don't we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Our next action item is the charge to the Career Center Working Group. Dr. Murphy, is there additional information on this item?
Yes, I'm going to turn to Ms. Stingle to kind of give us a little bit of an update of some adjustments here to the charge.
So, I'm not going to go through the presentation that we saw last time, but I am going to point out some of the changes that have taken place as you've had your discussion with the county board on the charge. Again, if somebody is looking at this for the first time at home, they can see this on board docs. It provides the background and the plan for the Career Center. The revisions include, we extended the timeline. I think as people looked at this project, there's a lot on the plate of this group. And so, the timeline has been extended to August. We've assured Mr. Chadwick that we will have enough information to continue to have the CIP ready so that we can move on that in May, but we'll give the group more time to do their work. We refine the objectives for both the transportation and parking. I think the original language probably got a bit too far in the weeds, and so, you helped us take a step back from that and clean it up. And I think what now is there is manageable, and there may be some follow-up work for another group. And there was also some adjustments to the membership. So, I think we're in a good place on this. That's it.
Okay, terrific. And Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers?
Yes.
Okay. Before asking for a motion, does anyone have any clarifying questions on the updates? We can make comments after the motion. Oh, good? Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a motion. I move that the school board approve the charge to the Career Center Working Group as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Any comments? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Okay. That completes our action items. That, there was a lot of work involved in getting to that. So, that went very quickly, but I, I think now we've got some comments as everyone's absorbing the enormity of what just happened. So, Mr. Goldstein?
I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we sat here relatively quietly and approved those two. But there was a tremendous amount of work going on between us and the staff and back and forth with the county board and their staff because we all have to be aligned on this because it is a collaborative project. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows that, you know, it wasn't just a matter of, you know, a quick couple paragraphs under our noses and we vote on it. It really took a long, long time that we now have the opportunity to start marching out and get it right.
Right, right. Definitely. And Ms. Tolento?
I also wanted to remind the community that the county board still has to vote on the charge, correct? Okay. And it was one sentence, Mr. Goldstein, which is why I didn't, which is why I was able to read it so well, not the two paragraphs. Just teasing. Okay, thank you.
Yes. And, and we want to thank Ms. Tolento for taking on the role of liaison to the Career Center Working Group. The work has just begun, really, while it's a big moment to get to this point of agreeing on the charge. The work is about to really start on that. Ms. Tolento will be very deeply involved, and of course, we'll all stay in touch. And really want to thank Katie Crystal on the county board. She helped shepherd this joint charge on the county board side. We needed both boards to agree to this wording. The county board will be voting on the exact same charge at their meeting later this month. And we will also be, just so you all know, looking at the membership at our next school board meeting, and the county board as well. So, with that, speaking of work, we are going to go on to four information items. And the first one is the middle school boundaries. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to turn to Dr. Sarah Johnson, who's going to make the presentation this evening for the middle school boundary recommendations. I want to make notice and thanks to our planning staff who has worked diligently with, across many of our departments to bring forward this evening's recommendation. I also want to thank the community for their level of engagement and feedback. I do want to make note that this evening, we are bringing forward a recommendation. There's a public hearing that is scheduled for November the 30th, and that's prior to the start of the regular school board meeting that evening. And then, we are slated to take action on this item on December the 14th. So, with that as a backdrop, again, thank you, Dr. Johnson and your team for bringing this forward. And I'll let you walk us through... this forward, and I'll let you walk us through the recommendations.
Great. Good evening. Good evening, my name is Sarah Johnson, and I'm a planner in the Department of Planning and Evaluation, and that's the department that's leading the work on the boundary change process. We've collaborated with an interdepartmental team to implement a process that informs and listens to the community as recommendations were developed. I'm going to provide you some background on how the recommendations were developed, review the changes, and the impacts on students. Our sixth middle school will open at the Stratford site in September 2019. We have three goals with this process. The first is to create a boundary for the new middle school, second, to relieve crowding, and third, better balance enrollment among the middle schools. The boundaries are being changed now so that families of current fourth, fifth, and sixth graders and future students can prepare ahead of time for this change. This slide provides a long-term look at middle school growth. We recognize that there's a need for new middle school seats, and that need will continue to increase, so we know it's important to get as many seats available online to balance enrollment as quickly as possible. The school board policy requires a boundary change when opening a new school. There are six considerations that guide the process: efficiency, proximity, stability, alignment, demographics, and contiguity. The definitions and explanations for how these considerations were analyzed by staff are available online in both English and Spanish. This is an overview of the community engagement process. It started with the school board work session and included community meetings that were livestreamed, interpreted in Spanish, and posted online, forms the community could use to share their thoughts and suggestions, and many, many emails. The next steps are the public hearing on November 30th and the school board action on December Again, and this is a slide that gives you some more detail about the community input. We received over 2,000 responses on the online forums that were posted throughout this, throughout the time that we were developing the recommendations. There were videos that were taped out of community meetings, and thus far, they've been viewed almost 1,000 times, and we had nearly 600 people attend in-person meetings. I want to note that on the slide, we did not list the community meetings that were held We've also been asked a lot about how we've actually used the community input. As you can see here, we worked with colleagues from several APS departments and vetted options with APS and county staff. We really took to heart the ideas and issues shared with us by the community. We researched and explored what might be possible. This recommendation reflects what we know can work and what we heard from the community. As we mentioned in meetings, the staff had several guiding principles for developing recommendations. We wanted to make sure that all six of the considerations were applied consistently throughout the county. We want to make sure the recommendations aligned with the county commitment to walkable communities, and we wanted to maintain a focus on the needs of all students. Based on the community input and a further staff analysis, we've developed the following This new recommendation does several things. It creates a new attendance zone for the new middle school. It better balances enrollment with more than half of students in potential walk zones and aligns with what we heard from the community. Enrollment for the five middle, for five middle schools will range from 100 to 111%. Williamsburg will provide an opportunity for APS to look at putting an option program in the school because it has available capacity. And to go into more detail, out of, out of more than 6,000 students, 1,545 are reassigned to a new middle school. Most of the planning units that have been reassigned are actually going to the middle school, so out of 84 planning units, 59 of them are actually going to the new middle school at Stratford. And four schools, more than 50% of the students are in the potential walk zone. We have a range in capacity and economically disadvantaged students across schools. For capacity, for capacity, the range is from 89% at Williamsburg to 111% at Swanson. The percent of economically disadvantaged students ranges from 1% at Williamsburg to In terms of the students who are impacted, current seventh and eighth graders are not impacted by this change. Starting in September 2019, the changes will apply to students who are currently in grades four through six. Those students will be in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in 2019, and any student coming after them will also go to the new schools, the newly assigned middle schools. We are recommending that all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders attend their newly assigned schools starting in September 2019. This will better balance capacity at each school, keep siblings together, help transportation services, and allow for the removal of some relocatables. In terms of next steps, the school board will make decisions on the recommended boundary changes and which grades will move in September 2019. Just as a reminder, there are still opportunities for the public to YN. There's a public hearing on November 30th, and you can sign it up online, either on the school board page or on the middle school page. The board will take action on December the 14th, and again, the new boundary changes will go into effect in September 2019. That's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Elliott, do we have speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have 10 speakers on this topic. I will call you up three at a time and ask you to line up over by the door so we can move through a little more quickly than waiting for everyone. So the first three speakers are Christina Hedrick, Patricia Stasko, and Dima Hakura.
And while they're getting ready, do you want to remind everyone that to please withhold any applause, it does take away from time, and this is a nice, visible way to express your enthusiasm for anyone's comments that we get, we can see and allows us to move on quickly. Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Christina Hedrick. I'm from planning unit 15120 in the Glebe Elementary School Zone. I have a fourth grader and a four-year-old. I just wanted to come tonight to thank you for listening to many Glebe parents who have been engaged with this issue. These include families in more than 40 households who signed two joint letters from our planning units. We also thank you for listening to the voices of our neighborhood associations, the Wecroft Woodlawn Civic Association, and the John M. Langston Citizens Association. We support the new plan because we feel like it follows the guidelines set forth for the boundary changes. It values proximity. This is what so many residents have asked for, given that we are a small, dense, and congested county. It's just not convenient to get around, especially at rush hours. Many of our parents would rather be at a walkable school, even one with relocatables, rather than have our kids bus several miles away. The impact of that distance would be a far greater disruption on our students' lives. We think that allowing walkers to be walkers will reduce costs and promote efficiency. We also think the new plan shares the benefits of proximity in a more fair and racially balanced way. I'm glad you're listening to the diverse communities who are asking to have the same benefit of living near a school. We also think your new plan is better for alignment. Our students and families at Glebe have spent six years building friendships. Our community is really valuable to us, and that's why there's a lot of us here tonight. We wanted to speak up for it. We feel like our community supports our students' ability to learn. We're really glad that your new plan allows a larger group of us to continue together. And finally, we understand that some critics are going to be upset about the demographic shifts in your plan. I would point out that the capacity estimate is five years from now into the future. We hope that you'll fill those seats by opening transfers to Williamsburg. We hope you'll look at creating an amazing choice program there. We hope that your new plan will empower us to build more connections in our community in Central Arlington between our neighborhoods. And also, we want to point out that you will have meaningful diversity at both Swanson and Stratford, and for our kids, that's going to be the best thing for them. Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Stasko?
Good evening, board members and superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Patricia Stasko. I am also a member of the Glebe Elementary School community. I'm a kindergartner there, and a future Glebe student is here with us tonight, and I represent many families in the Glebe community in planning units 15061, which is mine, as well as 15040 and 15120, and have submitted some papers from, from those folks. And we want to thank the staff and the board for listening to our concerns and urge you to vote in favor of the revised Option A. The prior plans did not follow the considerations of proximity, alignment, or efficiency that set out by APS for this process, and they weren't fair to our Glebe community. The prior middle school boundary plan split Glebe into three middle schools, and under the prior plan's Highview Park area, also known as Halls Hills, and a portion of Wecroft Woodlawn neighborhoods were slated to go to Williamsburg, it created a small cohort of students who would be bused to Williamsburg, which is 3.7 miles, 3.75 miles away from Glebe, once Swanson and Stratford, both about a mile away in either direction of Glebe, both walkable. And it wasn't fair to the diverse community of Highview Park that they were split up and bused to Williamsburg, split away from the rest of the Glebe community. The Roslin Island was ended with the busing to Williamsburg, and in this new plan, that's ended too for, for Halls Hill. And we are thankful that you listened, and the current plan that you have is a win-win-win. It's a win because it meets the APS considerations of proximity, because it sends us to our two closest schools, our walkable schools; for alignment, because there's no longer a small group of students being split off to go to Williamsburg; and for efficiency, because there's no busing. It's a win because it meets the wishes of the majority of the Glebe community, and it's also a win because if there are Glebe families who want to attend Williamsburg, it seems that there would be the opportunity to do so with the 89% capacity. So we urge you to vote and support the revised Option A middle school boundary plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before Ms. Hakura speaks, the next three speakers will be Kay Moyer, Gary Singer, and Alexandra Boshin.
Good evening. I'm here regarding planning units 24100 and 24111, which are basically the area around Clarendon Market Commons. However, our community in reality extends down to Courthouse Road. These units should be zoned for Stratford with the rest of our community. It is true that we have been zoned for over 20 years to TJ. However, when it was zoned, it was an old Sears parking lot, and 10th Street and Washington Boulevard were not the major thoroughfares they are today. The communities on the other side of these streets are not our communities. APS needs to start taking the reality on the ground and support community building. Today's recommendation is carving out a small segment. We have been waiting patiently to unite our community, and this is the time to do it. APS has publicly shared data with us that indicates that we have less than 10 to a maximum of 11 students per school year for these planning units. APS is using total numbers that include kids in key school who will be continuing to immersion schools. No projections have been made to separate those between those going to middle school, regular middle school versus the option programs. Simply put, these planning units do not generate enough students going to a non-emersion program to put Stratford over capacity. We are talking about a handful of students per grade. When elementary schools are typically split into two different middle schools, the split is somewhat proportional. However, in this case, over 95% of ASFS will be going to Stratford, and less than 5% will be left out. Why is it necessary to separate five to 10 kids from the rest of their school, especially when we're talking about sensitive and difficult transition years of middle school? Their elementary school friends provide a support network, which is the biggest benefit of public school. We are not trying to choose schools, as Stratford is frankly the unknown school, but what we do know that is important for our kids to stay within their community. The bus to Stratford will stop in our neighborhood anyway. We do not need another bus. Finally, we understand that APS needs to take a holistic view, but why does our neighborhood always have to bear the burden of the price? We are deprived of a neighborhood middle school in Roslin. We were deprived of the neighborhood elementary school at Key, and now we're being asked to pay the price a third time. I would urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
No, Ms. Moyer, I guess? Oh, there you are, sorry. I didn't have far to go. All right.
My name is Kay Moyer. I live on 17th Street North in Arlington, obviously. I will go quickly. You've all been receipt of my previous comments. Thank you for allowing me the moment to speak regarding the middle school boundary changes. I'm here to voice my support for revised Option A, and I'm here to thank the Arlington Public Schools staff for listening to my concerns and those of my Glebe community to keep the Glebe students together by sending our children to one of two walkable middle schools instead of three, one of which would have required our children to be bused. It is not that I question the quality of education that my children will receive at any one school in the county. It is such that I question the logic of separating a small cohort of children into three middle schools, thereby breaking bonds that we, all adults and children alike, have forged while our children attended Glebe Elementary School. I also question why APS would have chosen to bus children to a middle school that is three and a half miles from their home school, the Glebe Elementary School. Walkability is one of my family's priorities and is one of the primary reasons we chose to buy on 17th Street North, as we are walkable to three schools, Glebe, Swanson, and Washington Lee. All of you are in receipt of my formal comments, and I, like I said before, I stand by those comments. I would like to add that while I understand that the revised Option A leads to Williamsburg being under capacity, I continue to support the revised Option A and will gladly put up with Swanson being estimated at overcapacity, as I value the continuity of our social bonds, the community we have built, and the freedom my son will gain as a walker to Swanson. My partner, Christina, and I value the education that our sons receive here in Arlington County, and we value our community bonds and wish not to see them eroded by middle school boundary changes. I thank you for your time and effort in this difficult process, I don't doubt that, and I also thank you for your personal emails, phone calls, and willingness to listen to my community. And one last time, I support, I support the revised Option A for middle school boundary changes.
Each time I come to a school board meeting or a PTA meeting, my kids always ask me afterwards, Daddy, what did you learn in school tonight? And I tell them that in listening to some pretty good lessons in civics and civil discord, I also learned that we're pretty darn lucky as a community. At a fundamental level, this middle school process is about which high-performing school our kids get to go to. That's a pretty good problem to have. And I'll confess, I had an instinct, right, to get at the pitchfork and the outrage every time an iteration came out, but I have to keep forcing myself to take a step back and look at a couple core values here. We have excellent programs that we can send our kids to. The debate is about which is the best, most diverse way to accomplish the community. Many of us live within walking distances of one or more schools, and we have a process run by the board and the school system that is listening to feedback, and for this, I'm thankful. And as Elijah said, kicked off this meeting so well, it's so nice to come and talk about what we've accomplished versus what gaps we have. And I'm glad I came at the beginning of the meeting to hear him say that, because that is our future, right? And so, we've got to be thankful for that. When the Arlington process works, it's awesome. We've gone from recommendations that were kind of bizarre and intolerable to ones that I think work. Are they perfect? No. Is there room for improvement? Probably. What I encourage you, though, over the next month, as lots of my peers come forward and everyone has pros and cons, is to keep the core value presented by Dr. Johnson and Dr. Murphy, which is, kids who can walk should. And as we look at units and where they go, there's real families involved, and as long as we stay true to, if you're in a walkable zone, you should walk, I think that achieves the right goals for our community. So thank you, thank you for your time, for your leadership, and for listening. It's worked well for my community.
I'm sorry, sir, could you give us your name, please? I missed it in the beginning.
My name is Gary Singer. I'm in the Glebe District.
Thank you very much.
All right, before Ms. Boshin speaks, our final four speakers are Sanjeev Sikhan, Jessica Buckwalter, Amy Decker, and Michael Beer.
Hello, school board members and staff. My name is Alexandra Boshin, and I am here as the president of our civic association, John M. Langston Citizens Association, which serves over nine houses, 900 households. Our community endorses the revised version of Option A proposed and submitted by the staff on November 8, 2017, and presented by Superintendent Murphy tonight. In fact, on November 9, I wrote, I wrote a letter to the school board regarding the middle school boundaries, and in this correspondence, I stated how thankful I was to staff for community engagement, for listening to the many voices and concerns from the families that attended Glebe Elementary, especially the concerns of our community, Halls Hills, Highview Park. We have many members calling, meeting, and writing to the school board regarding this topic. My purpose here today is to ask, ask the school board members to vote 5-0 on December 14, 2017 in support of the revised version of Option A that keeps Glebe children only feeding into two schools, Swanson and Stratford, as proposed. And for the record, our community, which many members are here tonight and are watching, will be here for the public hearing to again endorse and support, so we'll continue to come back and continue to keep knocking. So we will continue to come back and continue to keep knocking.
Good evening. My name is Sanjeev Sikand, and I currently have two children at ASFS. I also have two other children in the pipeline who will hopefully attend ASFS in the future. I'm here to urge you to reconsider the middle school boundary proposals, which I've made in Planning Units 24100, 24111, one of the few ASFS key planning units that are not being sent to Stratford. Now, I've heard my colleagues from Glebe come up here, and I completely agree with them and understand what they've stated, why they should be within Stratford and Swanson middle schools. They don't want to go to Williamsburg because there's a small cohort that was directed there previously. By the same logic, that should apply to my planning units. Now, with the latest APS staff proposal from last week, my kids stand to lose many of their friends from their soccer teams and scouting troops. And I saw the slides earlier from Dr. Johnson stating what the codes are for establishing boundaries. Two of those were alignment, efficiency, contiguity. That is precisely what applies to us and the reason that you should vote to move us into Stratford. Point one, Washington Boulevard and 10th Street North are the proper boundary for Stratford. If you go to my neighborhood and you look at this map, map right here, you will see the green area here, 24100 and 24111. That's where we are. These are very natural boundaries for elementary and middle schools. Why is that? Washington Boulevard and 10th Street North have very few crosswalks. They're not well-witted, and they're unfit to walk down with children. So as a result, most of our kids, they play at Rocky Run Park. They don't venture below 10th Street and Washington Boulevard at those portions because there's a lighting issue and few crosswalks. Clarendon and Wilson Boulevards, on the other hand, the northern boundaries of our planning units, those have a crosswalk at every block and are well-witted.
Thank you.
And for these reasons, please take these into account and make your proposals. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Buckwalter. I have three kids who are currently at Glebe Elementary School, and I am a member of the Highview Park, Halls Hill community. I'm here to vote, voice my strong support for the revised Option A. I'm going to echo the comments made by Patty, Christina, Gary, Kay, and Alexandra. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that they have said. The prior plans did not take into account alignment, proximity, or efficiency for our community. The revised Option A takes all of those things into account and no longer cleaves off our children from Highview Park, from the elementary school community, our friends, and our neighbors. That said, I wasn't planning on addressing this, but the two people before me who have talked about the Arlington Science Focus and the key school planning units, there were two planning units, the considerations have not been applied consistently for them. Right now, under your, the APS numbers, Stratford is at 100% capacity. Jefferson is at 110% capacity. It makes total sense to move those two planning units to Stratford as that community, community wants. You've moved three Discovery planning units away from Stratford to Williamsburg. You've freed up capacity at Stratford. And I urge you to apply the considerations, the same considerations that you're applying to everyone else, to those two planning units.
Hello, my name is Amy Decker, and I have two kids at Arlington Science Focus, two boys, second and third grade. Now, imagine for a minute when you were in fifth grade, and you were getting ready to go to middle school, and how scary that is. It's very scary to go to middle school. Now imagine you are going to middle school away from most of your friends. All your friends are going to middle school together, but you are stripped away. That's very scary. It's going to be a very hard time for our kids if they don't get to go to school with their, their Arlington Science Focus friends. My boys will have a particularly hard time, I believe, because my older son has ADHD, inattentive. He doesn't know social cues. He will have a hard time making new friends. My younger son, he, he's a very bright kid, very smart, very articulate, but he's very image-focused. He's in second grade right now. He actually has no, will not get any permanent lateral incisors on his, top of his mouth, which means that he's going to go through a period where he has a big gap in his mouth. That will be the middle school years and early high school years. It will be very hard for him to have to meet new friends, being a very image, so, image-focused kid, and he will have, he, it's going to hurt his self-confidence and ultimately, his academic performance. Because if, if you lose a lot of your social connections and your support network, your academic performance suffers. And I care a lot about their social aspects and the academic performance. With that in mind, I don't think that the staff has justified keeping our kids away from the rest of the Arlington Science Focus community. It's, I don't think the proposal is consistent with the guiding principles. I also don't think the numbers match the recommendation. Now, I have a PhD in finance. For a living, I design experiments where we take the results, the statistical results, and make recommendations for decisions. I can look at the numbers that are on, on Arlington Public Schools website, and I know that those numbers do not justify the decision to keep our kids away from Stratford. And I guess with that in mind, I would like you to reconsider the location and the schools for our kids. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Michael Beer from Maywood, parent of two kids. I rise and ask you to reconsider the Plan A. It's better than B, but I think your process is fundamentally flawed, and I know that you've put a lot of outreach, a lot of meetings, a lot of community input. And the calendar for major decisions is stacking up, and it's difficult to delay. But I think you have a serious problem here, because we are talking about hyper-segregating your worst segregated schools. And the commitment of, to diversity here is going down the toilet. It's very, very bad. We saw this in the high school boundary issue, and now we're seeing it in the middle school boundary issue. We had passionate community comment last year, particularly from New York Town students and community, talking about the importance of diversity. It looks like Williamsburg and Kenmore are going to be more hyper-segregated than they are right now. This is not good for achievement gaps issue. This is not good for any of the kids to be in hyper-segregated schools. You had the six kind of points put forward here that are criteria, but it seems like demographics is really for show only. It was very interesting that you didn't actually permit, present the demographics slide showing economic, uh, data on the free and reduced lunch kids and wealthier kids here today. I think that's very telling. I think the school board needs to stand up and realize that, yes, we have parents here who are focusing on efficiency and their own kids, but you have a duty to realize there are a lot of other voices and considerations out there, and you need to balance this. This is completely unbalanced. You need to go back to the drawing board and come up with something that doesn't promote hyper-segregation in our schools.